My name is Mark Keine. I'm the President and CEO of Southwest Developmental Services Incorporated, SDSI. I'm also the Chairman of the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I also chair the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. I'd like to start out by recognizing our sponsors this evening, the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce, the Garden City Telegram, Downtown Vision, Inc., and we'd like to thank the City of Garden City for the use of facilities here. Tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates running for the Garden City Commission, and after they are finished, we will hear from the Holcomb City Council. We have a second session on April the first, starting at 6 o'clock, for the USD 457 Board of Education, followed by the Garden City Community College Board of Trustees, and the candidates running for those positions. The second forum tonight will begin immediately following the completion of the one here for the Garden City Commission. And the format tonight that we're going to follow, each candidate will be given one minute to present their platform. Prepared questions will be asked with each candidate getting two minutes to answer. Our timekeeper is right over here, Nicole. If time permits, note cards have been provided to the audience, and those questions will be asked using the same two-minute time allotment. And what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to start over here to my left with Roy with the first question, and then on the second question, I will start with Melvin, and third one, Dan, and fourth one with Jacob. That way, we're not starting at the same place all the time, and you're not put on the spot every time. These questions were submitted by the Chamber of Government Affairs Committee, the Garden City Telegram staff, and members of the community. With that, what we'd like to do is start out with candidate introductions here, and what you will have is 60 seconds. Introduce yourself, talk about your platform, and again, Nicole will be over here letting you know when 60 seconds is up, and please bring it to completion as quickly as you can then. With that, I'm going to start over here immediately to my left, Roy, and we'll start with you. Yes, tell us about your platform.
Thanks, Mark. Hi, I'm Roy Cessna. I'm current Mayor of the City of Garden City. I am running for reelection for City Commission seat to keep moving the city forward in a positive direction. We're currently developing residential, commercial, and industrial sectors, which I think is great for our community. We've done great in the retail sector. We've done a lot of great things in transportation. We had Tri-Motor Transportation. We've just recently received a Tiger grant that we're still working on implementing for our community with rail. We have a record number of employments at the airport. But, you know, we're really needing to focus on industrial, the industrial sector for our community. Retail's been good, which is a quality of life issue. We're also looking at being, becoming independent for electrical service, and regional water is another issue that we're looking at as a commission. But overall, that's why I'm running, is to keep moving Garden City in a positive direction in southwest Kansas and making us a regional, not only destination location, but a regional location for retail, industrial, and transportation needs in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Melvin?
Hi, I'm Melvindale. I'm also running for a position on the Garden City Commission. I came to this town in 1978, and it was really a small town, and working on the streets as a police officer, we only had one convenience store, so at nighttime, there wasn't much to do. But it's been amazing how it's grown. I've really been impressed the way it has grown, and I think that we have a bright future ahead of us. And like the mayor said, we have a lot of things on our plate, a lot of things for the future, and what we consider is going to be good for our community. It's a position that we have as commissioners to make the final decisions that's brought before us. We may not always agree, but as a team, we work together very well. And regardless of who is voted on, it'll still be a team of four, of five, and I'm sure that the continuation of working together will be there. This was the, probably the shortest two years that I've ever done anything, and probably the most rewarding things in my life I have done. I have served my country for 20 years, and I've worked for the city and the state for another 30 years, and now with the City, it's the City Commission. But this, this really brings out the, what I call the best thing I've ever had to do and enjoyed it the most, and I hope to get reelected.
Thank you, Melvin. Dan?
My name is Dan Fankhauser. I'm up for reelection. I just am finishing up a four-year term. I'd like to thank the Garden City Chamber of Commerce and Garden City Telegram and Downtown Vision for sponsoring this forum. I think it's a great way for people to understand what we've been doing and what we've accomplished as city commissioners. Also, I'd like to thank everyone in attendance here today, and also the Channel 8 people that are listening in. I guess I'm a lifelong member of this community. Moved here when I was four years old. I raised my family in Garden City, and I've always wanted to give back to this community because we've been in business for over 40 years, almost 50 years, in Garden City. And also, I wanted to see Garden City prosper. At some point there, about five years ago or so, it seemed like Garden City was not accomplishing what I wanted to see it accomplish. Dodge City was getting all these things, casinos and other things, and so that was one reason why I ran when I did. But I've been real proud of what we've accomplished in the last four years, and I hope that we can continue this growth in an orderly fashion. I've promoted, and my fellow commissioners have heard me say this, there's five things that I think have made Garden City the regional center of western Kansas. And the first one is obviously the retail development, the airport, the zoo, the hospital, and of course, a strong downtown. I think that's important in any community. People drive down Main Street, and if they see a lot of buildings that are closed up, it affects what, how they feel about your city. So those are things that I think are important, and I think Garden City is on a strong, strong road to becoming the regional center of western Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jacob?
My name is Jacob, and I'm running for election for City Commissioner. As Cessna has said, you know, we're to build the city, and as all these commissioners, I wanted to do is make Garden City a landmark. Building, bringing in retail business, bringing in more housing is what's needed, making sure it's affordable housing, make sure there's quality living in the city, bringing in industrial, and doing all these different things to all combine together that make a city a city and make it a big city. And, you know, as they have done this, this is something I want to do, and I want to serve young, energetic, and new ideas, and a new perspective on old ideas. And I look forward to working with any of these commissions who get elected and serve the people and be a sounding board for the unheard.
Thank you, Jacob. Melvin, I'm going to start with you now on the first question here. I'll remind you, y'all have two minutes for these questions. What will you do, or what have you done, to be inclusive, engaging, and communicative with diverse groups in the community?
Well, I think probably the only diverse group that I've, that I had dealings with here directly as a commissioner was when I attempted to get some sort of rental property listed and put in place so that we would have an idea who is actually out there renting property, making sure that they're renting it in accordance to state law, making sure that we did have all the places safe and sound for people to live in. And it's still a pet peeve of mine to try to get these houses up to code, and I'm really only talking about a small majority of residents in the city that probably do not meet all the standards. But it only takes one house with an accident to have a fatality, and every year across this country, we do have those fatalities in residential areas. My experience in the past, in one week, I investigated two trailer houses and dug out seven bodies because there was no alarm system there. It's still out there, and I would still like to see all those change.
Would you like me to read the question again?
Yeah.
Okay. What will you do, or what have you done, to be inclusive, engaging, and communicative with diverse groups in the community?
Well, I think that the diversity of this community is probably one of its strong assets, and I think that we've tried to include everyone in discussions, our CPI project, whenever people have ideas, there's a diverse group in that, members. We try to include everyone, and, you know, even down to our logo that we have for the City of Garden City, which is right there on the wall, you know, "The world grows here." We tried to incorporate that and bring all the different groups together and come into a center core. I think we've done a good job. We've tried to meet with the people. I mean, we've had, one of the groups that one of the, old American Legion building was one of the diverse groups, and we've, I think we've done a good job, and there's several people that are on committees, groups, and within the city, so I feel, I feel good about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob, can we read it again, or are you okay with it? Okay. It's a long question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing for the city is to make sure that we break the barriers that are in the path of this, this group, and this group, and this group, and that to find a way where we can all co-mingle, and different events that we can all come together and share something in common. And this, not only does this bring us together as a city, it brings the community, it brings diverse groups together as a community, and it also helps relationships, and also learning how one group is different from another group, and, you know, we can each take something from different groups, and it's finding ways that we can be able to do that. You know, I talked to all kinds of different diverse groups, and with all the different jobs I've had, you know, you see them on a daily basis. You sell, you run into all the different diverse groups, and you engage in them, and at some point, you start learning from them. And I learned a lot of different things, and a lot of the things I wanted to like to implement and find ways to help them out, that helps me out, that helps us a lot out, and together as a city, and opening opportunities for more diversity on, you know, committees and everything like that, and finding ways to be able to open the opportunity to them, and look into the ideas here, and kind of find ways to help them out with that.
Thank you, Jacob. Roy?
Thanks, Mark. As the City Commission, we need to speak, the five commissioners need to speak not only to just certain groups, but we need to speak to everybody in the community. We need to engage everybody in the community, not just certain groups. The commission, previous commissions and our commission work hard to try to do that. Like Commissioner Fankhauser noted, we have the capital improvement program that we try to encourage residents to not only do surveys on, but also to participate in meetings with. We have town hall meetings where we try to get groups to come in, or people to come in and communicate with us on their concerns, or thoughts, or ideas on how we're doing, or what we need to do to improve. I've been to a number of committee meetings on various ethnic and racial, well, not racial, but ethnic, questions and concerns that we've had as community. I've been to the Mexican-American parades, the Tet New Year that we recently had, which we celebrated. Also, I've been to a number of committee meetings and sat down with the people and, you know, discussed our objectives of where the city's going and see if that's in alignment with what, you know, that's the positive direction that we need to go. So we, as a commission, need to communicate not just to certain groups, but to everybody on what we're doing as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, I'm going to start with you on this one.
Go ahead.
One of the commission goals this year is to make regional, the regional airport more regional. What kinds of things would you do to support that goal?
That's an easy one. No, you know, we've, employments, we always look at employments. We've grown that airport once we started with, with the regional jet service to Dallas. We've gone from 10,000 employments to over 26,000 last year, and with that, we've had to do some expansion, and for those that haven't been out there, we, you know, improved the restroom facilities, which needed an upgrade. We also have a new room that holds people before they get on the plane. We'll probably look at expanding maybe that airport sooner than later. I don't think at this point we'll bring in another airline, but we will, we may get another flight, or we may just get a larger jet for the two flights that we have, so. But we will be looking at that probably sooner than later as far as expansion.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Jacob?
My father used to work at the airline, on the airport when it was southwest, and it was small. It was very small, and, you know, going to the airport and seeing how, you know, going to the airport every now and then and seeing new things, seeing how things get bigger and things look fancier, more people there, it's constantly, the parking lot's full, you know, people are constantly in there, and to continue finding ways to make things more bigger, make things more fancy, you know, keep things upgrading, keep things quality, and to find ways to make it easier for traveling, you know, people love to travel, and, you know, whether it's bringing in another airline, or adding another plane, you know, definitely like that, that's what I'd like to see, is to continue to finding ways to either build onto it or to build more flights.
Thank you. Roy?
Well, I agree with my other commissioners that, or Fankhauser and the other candidate, that, you know, we've really worked hard, and the previous commissions worked hard to make Garden City a regional, definitely a regional airport. We've now got a regional flight going to Dallas-Fort Worth on a daily basis, bringing passengers back, which is a steady, constant service which other communities don't have, which is great for us. The commission picked this goal to enhance, to really, truly make Garden City the regional airport for western Kansas. There were some discussion items that we talked about, trying to look at additional flights with the current airline, or bringing in an additional airline. The industry right now, as we see it, they have limited number of airplanes and limited pilots. I'd like to see if we could add some more charter service to our airport to possibly increase the employments. I know we've, like Commissioner Fankhauser noted, we've improved the terminal area. We've also got plans in place to improve the taxiways as well, to help improve the safety of our airport. But we do a lot of great things to, we need to do more, but we're doing a lot of great things to promote our airport. We just need to do more to promote the accessibility that we have out from Garden City Regional Airport to the rest of the world, and just to keep increasing our employments that we have, because the increased number of employments that we have helps us with our federal funding. The other thing that's great about Garden City Regional Airport is we have a tower that attracts flights, as well as other airplanes from around the United States here to help enhance our economy. We do have a lot of people that start, stop here just because of the tower, which is a great economical asset that we have for Garden City. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Melvin?
Well, there's not much to say after everybody has got all their answers, without going back over it. The last two years that I've been here, we've been briefed several times and brought up to date on what's going at the airport. There's a, there's a plan to expand it based upon the amount of money that we can raise, and also the federal government will put into it. We feel that Garden City Airport is very important to, it's just like another hand in the industrial and the retail business here to bring in CEOs and to come into our community. The thing we offer out there that a lot of airports don't is we do offer free parking, and if you start spending X number of dollars per day, if you go to Wichita and fly out, it adds up, so it makes it a little more reasonable here. The runway is a thing to add on to, there's a goal there. The tower is great. It allows us to bring in other flights that come into the community to refuel, and also bigger planes can land here, as we seen back in 9/11. They put a couple of big airplanes down out on the airport, and so we know that we have a facility to be able to handle such things as that. As the mayor said, one of the biggest, hardest things on this is to get the aircraft in. The industry is short on aircraft, and there are just not enough pilots to bring another flight in. The discussion has been on the table several times to maybe try to get a flight to a different destiny, maybe like to Chicago, which would be another great hub to fly into. But those things are there. We, we feel that the airport is key to our growth and to our travel, and as long as we can keep an airport, it's best for us. And at one time, we had an airline that flew into Dodge, Garden, and Liberal while we let, we gave Dodge and Liberal the other airline, and we went with this one, and this has been the profitable one so far, so we're very proud of what the commission, before me, and staff has done to bring this airport to life. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Okay, Jacob, you're up first on this one. Should Lee Richardson Zoo, excuse me, relocate its elephants? If they go, should the city pursue efforts to bring a new group to the zoo within the next 10 years?
I was at the meeting when this discussion came up, and I've talked to family, friends, and some coworkers, and I've kind of had the same thing. If we are looking at the possibility of expanding the elephant's life by transporting them, then for me, if elected, I would not want to have that on my hands to hinder that and to see their life as going to the zoo diminished, and one die, and then one not be suitable for transportation, and maybe that one possibly, you know, after that. I'd rather sacrifice seeing them and to transport them, and to see, than to know that their, their life is being expanded, that they're meeting their social needs, that they're happier, and then, yeah, to bring something in, something else in, I would like sooner than 10 years, or the city to tackle down and either expand the elephant exhibit and to bring, to make it suitable for another elephant. So those are the two options I'm at right now.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Roy?
Thanks, Mark. You know, this one's a tough one because the elephants are an iconic thing for the zoo and for Garden City. When this was first brought to us in a pre-meeting, you know, you could hear a pen drop in our, in our meeting, the issue kind of goes back to the airline issue where the elephants age with elephants that are in captivity are in an extinction type of pyramid. They aren't, there's not enough young elephants out there, and all the elephants that are in captivity are at the age of, you know, getting older and are passing away. It was brought to us as a commission by the recommendation by the zoo board and by friends of Lee Richardson Zoo to look at putting out an RFP, or recommendation, to move the elephants. We're moving forward on that. We'll have to see, as a commissioner, I would like to see, before I make a vote, on what direction, if we'll keep them or if we'll transport them. I would like to see what, what it looks like before I make that, that decision. But if we do move them, I would like to see us at a different exhibit. We do have the, we do have the funds to expand the current exhibit, it's just, do we want to do that and not have the elephants available? And that's another idea. Or do we expand the exhibit, and then, or it's, we're in that quandary, what do we do? But the commission voted in favor of moving forward on getting proposals, and we'll look at those, and we'll make a decision after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Melvin?
That's a very rough decision that we're going to have to make, and I'm not sure where I'm going to go with this one. The elephants are important to our community and to the surrounding communities around here, which people like to come and look at them. The problem is, is one, well, let me back up. We have made plans and appropriated the funds to expand this existing area for the elephants, and we were going to try to make it so we could even get more elephants. We were going to try to get a couple more, I think. There's rules in the industry out there that say that elephants have to have so much space. In order to have a large herd, we would have to consider spending anywhere upwards of $10 million to have a larger herd here, having a bull and several cows and having a nice thing. So let's say if we had the $10 million and we went out there and built this thing, we would still have another problem. As the mayor mentioned, there's no young elephants out there, and there's no bulls available. The reproduction of elephants in the country has went down for whatever reason. There are just not any out there to have, so we're faced with these two. I feel that there's 14 zoos just like us that have two elephants, aging elephants, and all would like to have two more, even if they're aging, and we would probably like to have that. But I think we blinked first, so now we're going to see what comes back. But as a commissioner, if I vote to send them somewhere else, I want to make sure that they're going to the correct place. Personally, I would like to see someone else blink, and we get their elephants, and take our chances with expanding and expanding for the future, and see if we can do it. But we've got to have another one of those 14 zoos do it, otherwise, we're going to have two and be where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Melvin. Dan?
Well, I was one of the people that wanted to keep the elephants here. As long as I've lived here, I think we've had elephants, and it's a great drawing card for people in the entire area. I just read an article about Wichita. They had two elephants. They lost one, and the existing elephants getting along just fine. So I'm not sure that in every case, that if we lose one of our elephants, that the other one's going to go into deep depression. You know, I think that there's a handler there that's been with these elephants for like, I think, eight years, and he knows these elephants and knows their personalities. But, you know, this is one of those decisions where the majority rules, and if the commission votes to move the elephants, well, we'll move the elephants. But at this point, I'd kind of like to see them stay. I realize they're a social group and... I, I realize they're a social group and, and, and that can be a problem, but if we do move them, I'd like to see them either go to Wichita or Colorado Springs, because, you know, to move them to a sanctuary, you know, 1,200 miles away is, I don't think that's a good option, because I'm not sure they'd make it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Roy, we're back to you. What's the top infrastructure concerns for the city and how would you address it?
Well, I know we've addressed, we've, we had citizens come to us earlier in the year, last year, and they had concerns about our water, their water quality, and we've addressed those. And that's something that we're still addressing as we're adding new line, water lines to older areas of the community, and we're cleaning out current water lines to make the water, you know, provide high-quality water to all of our citizens. The other infrastructure issue, it'd be back to one of our goals that we developed this year, is to provide independent electric utility for the community to make, maximize our benefits to the city. As you remember, back last year, we moved from Wheatland Electric to the Kansas Municipal Energy Association, and that saved the community or the city in buying wholesale costs, about $4 million. It also didn't raise our fees for the last year, or last couple of years, actually, since we've been under him, and it actually stabilized the electric rates in the community. So working on those, as well as, you know, maintaining the roads and the streets like we normally do, but really working on the, those main issues where we do hear the complaints from the citizens and trying to stabilize our, our utility rates and keeping them stable is, is the biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Melvin.
Infrastructure involves a lot, and the mayor hit upon the water problems, and what we had is some four-inch lines that were put in 60 years ago, and they've been going back through and cleaning them out, replacing them, and they're continuing that process throughout the city where we do have it. We don't have a large amount of money where we can just go in and repipe the whole city. So they're doing it by sections, by the sections on area of the city, and it's, it's working out. I think we're going to control the water problem and provide what our goal and our job as commissioners to do is to provide you with good, clean, safe drinking water. So that is going. We always have an infrastructure with streets, but if you look at some of the other towns and around the area, we have some pretty good streets in our town, and they're well-maintained. I think the real goal is the continuation of the electrical service coming in. We've, we've, we've saved some money by transferring to the present provider and not having Sunflower providing this anymore. We, we still have to go through Wheatland's electrical power lines and through some of their substations, and they're making a pretty good profit on, on that for us. Our goal is eventually is to build our own line and substation so we can bring it in and not have to pay somebody else the money, which will, in the long run, will give back to the community cheaper rates, because we'll be able to control and we can bid for. We also put in three turbine generators out there at, at Jameson Property. A lot of people should drive out that way and took a look at them, they're very impressive. Those generators on the line in the summertime provide us a lot of savings where we don't have to pay for high-cost electricity during the, the summer months. They also, during the wintertime, will provide us enough electrical power to provide the city of Garden City. We lost all connections anywhere else, we can maintain the city. So that is a good plus for our community. It gives us more opportunity to be standing around, and like the mayor said, we saved $4 million in, in electrical costs last year, and the, that money will be well-used to replace the, the monies that they try to have on hand in the electrical company to, department to be able to do the things they have to do, plus build for the future. And I think that is, you can't grow unless you have electrical power. So I think that's our number-one priority on infrastructure.
Thank you.
Dan, thank you.
I think our top, top asset is we have water for Garden City, and that's going to be so important in the future, not only for domestic water, but also for industrial uses. And in the future, I think people, companies will look at Garden City and, and see that that's a big asset, because without water, you know, you can't have a lot of industry. So I think that's important. Our sewer lines and water lines, especially the water lines in the older part of town are cast iron, and now, of course, we use plastic, and so these cast iron lines corrode, and we have to go in and clean them, and that's been a big priority, not, for water lines, like they mentioned. But I think, I think that for us to, to grow as a city, not only residential growth, but also industrial growth, we're, we, we, we need water, we need power, good power supply, which we have, and we have a wastewater plant that's sufficient for future growth. So we have a lot of positive things going on in this city, and I think that's going to help us with our growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jacob.
I was going to kind of say the same things. The main three ones are, you know, electric, streets, and water, and it's maintained that each one has a quality, and as Commissioner Dale had said, you know, finding, you know, a good one would be to get our own power lines and not have to pay someone else, become an energy independent, which is a bold move, it's a move that is needed for the city, it's a, it's a move that kind of shows people that you do care, you do care about the prices, you do care about the quality, and that's what's needed. And then streets, you know, our main streets are, they're really nice, and there's a lot of back road streets, residential streets, that could be fixed up, and when people come into town looking for a home to buy, you know, they want to be able to ride on that road and make sure that, you know, you know, that it's, it's, it's going to be safe, that they're not going to worry about busting the tire and all different kind of things like that. So some of them, some of them could be improved. Overall, our streets are real nice. And then the water, you know, they have worked real hard on the water, and one thing I'd like to see is whenever there's a, well, I don't, I don't like to see it, when there's a water break, but the city jumps right on it, because they know how important that water line is, and it's maintaining that we have importance on all three of these categories. If something goes wrong, or if we see something, that we are vigilant on taking the time and, and making sure that it's feasible, we get it done, and that the overall improvement is satisfactory.
Thank you, Jacob. Melvin, we're back to you, starting now. Do you think there's an issue with red tape within the city? If so, how would you, how would you work to fix the issue?
I think there's problems any time that you have to deal with, with regulations. Some people just don't like them. That doesn't mean that it's, it's a problem with the red tape. If you follow the rules, which we have rules for a reason, to have everything done correctly and in an orderly manner, and everybody does it the same. I, I take my hat off to the inspection division that enforces the city codes. They take, they sometime take a lot of heat, but, but they do the job the best they can. What people don't realize, in some cases, all these codes are made because something happened, either a building collapsed or someone died. So you have your life safety code, you have your electrical code, you have your plumbing code, you have building codes, and these are all adopted by the U.S. and the state of Kansas, and they're adopted by Garden City. We have to follow the rules. We may not like what we have to do sometime, but it's in the best interest of our community to have a safe place. The easiest way to do that is, is to have codes. Now, code division down there does change their procedures from time to time to try to streamline them, but people have to work with them, and they'll work with whoever is trying to build something. I think this, this, this question, I, I'm not sure where it stems from, but if it comes from the place up north of town where they were trying to build a large building and they were having trouble with permits, then I think one has to look, that there is two sides to every coin. I believe in what my and cities, or our and city inspectors were doing down there. In fact, everything that they said that needed to be done and had to be done was, was also confirmed by the state of Kansas and the State Farm Marshal's Office on the building codes and design and plans. If they had done that, they wouldn't have had the problems. It was not our office, and I take my hat off to them guys to play it cool. If you haven't seen them out there complaining.
Thank you, Melvin. Dan.
Well, as some of you know, I'm an architect, so I get to, I get to work with those building officials a lot, and it's, sometimes it is frustrating, I guess you could call it red tape, but the thing is, is you've got to adopt, we adopted the International Building Code 2009. You've got to follow it, whether you're in the city or in the county, and it's, people that aren't familiar with the procedures get real frustrated with it real fast, and, you know, there's certain, especially with commercial buildings, not so much residential, but with commercial buildings, there's a certain procedure that you have to go through, and, you know, it has to be stamped by an architect, it has to, you have to have site planned with all this stuff on it, and so people get real frustrated with that, and they think that they're getting the runaround and whatever. So we try, what I try to do is if I'm talking to them, is explain it to them, you know, they're not getting picked on, this is, everybody has to follow the same rules. And once you kind of explain this to them, they seem to understand it, but if you haven't been through it and, and, you know, Co-op Building was a good, good example, I mean, you know, they went out there and, and started a project and didn't realize what they had to do. So it is frustrating for them. And the other thing is zoning. A lot of people don't understand that, and, you know, we've had some problems with people putting businesses in the wrong zone, and it's not allowed. So those are things that, that I try to explain to people as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jacob.
You know, the red tape, you can, you know, for businesses, it is about, you know, safety, and they have adopted these different codes to help ensure the safety and that, you know, everything is, all the regulations are met. But there's a second type of red tape, and that's in the resolutions and the ordinances that goes on, whether it affects the people and whether it's going to help them or hinder them. And I hear from a lot of different people that if you just go through the ordinances, there's stuff that just, it's pointless, and it's outdated and it's pointless, and it hinders people from doing things that people do anyways. There's no one to enforce it, and, you know, they enforce it on one person, but won't enforce it on a bunch of these other people. So it's going back, I'm going back through all these different things and seeing if this is really needed, if it's not needed, and cutting it if it's not, and, you know, if certain resolutions and ordinances are made and they do draw out red tape, I guess you could say, for reasons, some of it is, is good reasons and some of it's not good reasons. So, and then there is a few red tapes on businesses that I don't agree with, that I would want to go back over and look at. I've talked to either the businesses or people who would, in particular, put this certain object up at these businesses, and they have said that it's just excessive, they don't mind some of it, some of it is just not needed. So, I mean, it's going back through all those and seeing what is needed and what's not.
Thank you, Jacob. Roy.
Can you read the question one more time? Just to, just to make sure.
Do you think there's an issue with red tape within the city? If so, how would you work to fix this issue?
Well, there might be a perception of, of red tape in the, in the community, but I think, you know, our city staff works well to try to accommodate people in whatever they do. I mean, we're, we're an open community, we try to, you know, if it's business, if it's people trying to, you know, relocate and, and homes and everything, you know, our city staff works hard to accommodate people, to get them to their goal of whatever they're trying to achieve. Like, you know, Commissioner Dale mentioned that, you know, there are rules and regulations in place, there are ordinances in place to keep people safe, to, you know, run a business, we have to have some rules and regulations. So you do have to fill out paperwork, you do have to take time to get stuff, you know, put together some items to get stuff done. I mean, that's just with any business. But I know our, our city staff does a really good job at trying to help people, you know, get whatever needs got done to accommodate them to get, if it's a business, if it's getting into a new home, I know we work with those people to try to get that. The other thing, I know the commissioners talked about, you know, ordinances and the zoning issues, and, you know, we, we talked to our city staff to try to, you know, increase the staffing in our planning department, which they have done, which I think will help in the long run, which we've had some issues with, to help move some of the planning and the review of plans and things that are going on in our community, to help move that along in a, in a expedited fashion. We are a growing community, and it, and it takes time to go through any development needs or any plans that are being put in place, but I know we've worked with city staff to help, to help alleviate some of the hurdles that are in place going through the processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. For the crowd, the audience, if you have a question you would like asked, there may be time for it. Please hold your hand up, and we have notepads and note cards that will be handed out to you, and then, hold your hand up again when you're done writing your question down, they'll bring it up, and I will ask the question of the candidate. So if you're, if you're interested in asking a question, get your hand up, and Steve has the notepads up. Now, back to Dan.
Yes.
What is your position on providing incentives to attract and/or retain businesses in Fannie
Well, we've basically done two things, a TIF financing, which basically is anything horizontal in nature, street improvements, infrastructure, that type of thing. We've, you have to have some type of incentive to get people, like at the Schulman Crossing, that developer, to bring, to, to get them to come to Garden City, you've got to offer them some type of incentive, and that is, has helped us. I mean, we'll, we'll get that, they're paying this in lieu of taxes for like 20 years, but they are paying an equivalent amount, it's just going for infrastructure and that type of thing instead of property tax. So it's not a free ride, so to speak, they are paying, but you have to do that in order to get these, these big companies to come to town. Now, you know, we were, we were in business at Cash and Carey Lumber and, for close to 50 years, and, you know, we never got a dime from the city, Garden City, as an incentive, and didn't ask for anything. So, you know, I, but for businesses, new businesses coming to town, that's, you just about need to do that in order to attract them to your city. As far as the Starbond situation with the people from Kansas City, the soccer field, that's a little bit different, and that's both horizontal and vertical. In other words, we could... In other words, we can get, give them money for structures also. But those things, a lot of people, it's, you know, it was new to me. So I know it was new to, to people, you know, in the audience and people as citizens. So that's all.
Thank you, Dan. Jacob?
It's almost a rabbit cloud, what Commissioner Frank Hauser said. At some point, you've got to bring in, you've got to offer some kind of incentive to bring in companies and not only companies, but well-known companies. Companies that people automatically see it, they know that, what they want to know opens up, they're going to be there. And bringing in these companies, and it's one thing to put a business in Wichita, it's another thing to put a business in Garden City. The city is growing, so it's not that, hey, we have 300-some thousand people that we need a business. It's, hey, we have 30,000 people, let's put a business. So you have to offer some things to be able to bring these people in. And once they get here, get them all settled in and watch as the city grows. And so, I mean, you've just, at some point, you've just got to offer something to give. So, you know, they're giving you a business, you have to give them something else in return.
Thank you, Jacob.
You know, it's part of our goals to increase the commercial, industrial, and residential sectors of our community, is growing and expanding community. The ways we've done that is through what Commissioner Frank Hauser mentioned was through the tax increment financing tool. We've also used the RHID, which I can't think of all the letters on that, but to help with our housing situation. There are a number of other programs, and forgive me, but I don't know all of them, but like Downtown Vision has a program that helps to start businesses downtown as an incubator that they're working on. So there's, there's a lot of things that we have in place that will, that can help attract and retain businesses in our community. It's just going and finding them or talking to the right people, like the Chamber or Downtown Vision or Economic Development, to help get those resources and get that information to help bring and attract and retain the companies and businesses in our community. And for the Star Bond, I think, you know, Sporting KC did look at Garden City. It's something that'll help move our community in a forward direction. It'll be create Garden City and make Garden City a destination location. It'll definitely help to expand our regional, our regional reach as a destination location, but it also creates a quality of life issue for us where it'll retain people as well as when we go out and recruit professionals from trying to pull professionals into our community, it's a quality of life issue, that we have these attractions that pull people to our community, like we do have with retail development that we have in the community, the Paycos League coming in, as well as now the Star Bond with the Sporting KC. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to start with a little history on this. Garden City's vision to, to be a regional hub went back a number of years ago and it's been a lot of commissioners that have worked on this long before any of us were really here. They set the plans and got it kicked off and got it started. We're recipients of what they've got done and we're going to go forward with growing the city and trying to bring more in. It's, it's not like we go out and recruit. We, we have a recruiting company that, that works in this and they're out there every day trying to bring in new businesses to our community. We have Fannie County Economic Development that is working very hard on trying to bring some in. I think they've got some stuff on their plate someday. I hope that they'll be able to announce these things, which will help. I think Downtown Vision is great because it gives a different type of shopping and we have a great business district downtown. I think with our, with the start of our business district that we have in the new area out east of town and us becoming the shopping hub in southwest Kansas makes us number one for bringing more people in, businesses in. If you stop to think, how many businesses are going to go to Dodge or Liberal to start a new store when everybody's coming here? So they're going to come to Gardens. We just have to keep that pace going and keep offering things, whether it be a tax abatement or what have you. We also have to have some entertainment for the people coming in and we're working on that as, as I speak. I think we've got, we're trying to get the Star Bond along with the Soccer League coming into town. That provides some entertainment. Summertime baseball will provide entertainment. I think there's an organization that's wanting to bring an inside water park in that will be available for year-round for people. So people will not only be able to come in and shop, they'll be able to have entertainment and have good places to eat and stay. But I think that the people that are really concerned and have their heart in this city every day are trying to bring in something different and exciting for us here to help us grow in our business world. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Okay, I have some questions here that came in from the audience. I'm going to start over here, Jacob. What should be done with the State Theater?
I was at the meeting also when that came up. There was three different entities who wanted to, who had different ideas, same idea, but different way of handling it. They all sounded great. I don't mind the Preservation Alliance having that, co-teaming with some, with another entity. And the Preservation Alliance is to preserve the integrity of historical buildings, which the State Theater is one. And then, you know, I'm, I would like to lean towards the Garden City Recreation Commission and them taking that over. The way that they have their, the way they had things set up is it looked like they were coordinating, were coordinating better. So that's, you know, that's what I'm leaning towards is this Recreation Commission and then the Preservation Alliance co-teaming to handle the building.
Thank you, Jacob.
Well, when it was presented to us, I, I kind of agreed with our, my fellow commissioner, Vice Mayor Dahl about if they could, they all had the same, pretty much, well, not really the same, but they all had kind of the same idea or direction that they wanted to take the theater. The thinking I kind of had and Vice Mayor Dahl had was, why don't they all team together, come together and all three work together and make, make a really great proposal to, to bring to the commission and they could all three work together as a team. I think that would be a great way, because they all have their, they all had pretty much the same idea. They all had, you know, a different little type of element to it, but I think if they could all come together and work as a team to preserve the State Theater and provide another attraction and destination location item for, especially downtown Garden City, for evening entertainment and for weekend entertainment, it would be great. But it's something that would be brought up to our next city commission meeting and I'll see what, what's provided then and we'll make a decision and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Melvin?
I agree that if we could get all three parties to work together, that would be great, but I think you've got a lot, a lot of egos going there and I'm not sure that that's going to work out the way everybody would like it to work. I, I don't have a preference at this time, except I don't want the city to own the building. It doesn't do us any good. We're not in the rental business and we're not here to pay for the building to be operated and pay for the electricity and do all the maintenance and do all those things. It's, it's not ours. I'd like someone to come up and buy it and it's theirs. They put it on the tax rolls, they pay the taxes on it, they do their, their own production shows and they bring the building up to code and make it safe. That's the only thing I ask for. Give it to somebody that's got the money. It's not the city's responsibility to do that.
Thank you, Melvin. Dan?
Well, I think, I think the two groups, I think the, the Rec Commission and the Alliance could probably work together on it. But, you know, I think what we need to do is they just need to do some minimal maintenance, get some restrooms on the main level, get a decent heat and air conditioning system and make it work for a while and let's see how it goes. And then, at some point, maybe, you know, do some major remodeling. But I think some, some of the, the groups wanted to do way too much to that building and it's, it's going to cost too much money. And I think that there's a, a better solution once they, once they look at it and, and, you know, there's some minimal things that can be done and we can use it for a while and then let's see what happens. But, but I, I agree, I don't think the three groups could ever get along, all three of them, no way.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, Roy, I'll start with you now. There was a health awareness presentation last month. What are some ways to encourage a healthier lifestyle in Garden City while being mindful of the taxpayers' money?
Well, we've done a lot of, lot of things. We've gotten a number of grants and we've worked with a number of foundations in the, in the state to add safer routes to school, additional sidewalks in the community. We've added additional trails in the community to promote health and well-being. I know organizations are looking at ways to cut expenses and add healthy activities in their organizations. And, you know, the, the community is really working towards to provide the avenues of making Garden City a walkable place that, in the community. And that's, you know, we started with Tally Trail and we've got a master plan of, of not only trails, but sidewalks that interconnect the whole community and make it a healthier place to get from one place to the other, but do it in a safe manner. I mean, you can, you can promote health all you want, but if you can't do it in a safe, safe manner, then it kind of shoots the cause down. But we're, we're really working to add additional trails, which we're doing right now. We just started down at Fennip Park, not Fennip Park, down at the zoo. We started adding more trails down at the zoo. And we've started, there'll be more sidewalks added. As the spring progresses, we start from Kansas Avenue and we'll start a sidewalk out to, to the Walmart in the new retail area. So that's another way of making it a safe place, but a, a way to make it a walkable place, Garden City a walkable community.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks.
Melvin?
I, I think we should be fairly proud of our city on what we've got going so far. We've, we've got a great zoo for people to go down and visit and walk around in. We've got the Tally Trails all over town. We have some sidewalks that need to be replaced and they're working on those. We have bike paths throughout the city that are designated bike paths. We have the zoo putting in trails down there that's going to connect on in to with the Tally Trails. As the mayor said, we're, this summer, we're going to build a sidewalk on the north side of the street from Campus Drive in Kansas all the way out to Walmart. That'll allow people that, to walk out to there. They're also going to put in crossing on all those signs, wherever the streets cross, where you have stop signs, stoplights, they're going to make it pedestrian safe to be able to go across the street and that'll help there. I, I think that the Garden City Rec just opened up a brand-new fitness center out there and it's, it's a lot better than the one they had. It's, I can't tell you how, how much bigger it is than the, the old place. So they, they have that facility, they've got trainers out there. So, you know, we, we are in a lucky place in Garden City, America here. Our climate is conducive to the point that we can really get outside about 10 months out of the year and walk and get around town. It's just a matter of motivation, but I think that we're providing as much as we can. We also are building a purchased property to expand Scott Park. They're on Eighth Street. That, I'm not sure yet what's all going to go in there. I think that probably next year, the CIP will probably be looking at that as what they want to do in the future up there, but that's going to make another nice facility on Eighth Street in that part of town. So that'll be other things, activities for people to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Dan?
I agree with everything he said. Plus, now, one thing I don't know if people realize, but when you build a new house or build apartments now, I mean, you have to put in sidewalks and either a curb sidewalk or setback sidewalk. And so, any new developments will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And also, we do have maps that show where all the trails are in Garden City, which I think the Rec Commission printed, had those printed or maybe Convention and District Bureau, but that helps. We've got a YMCA. I mean, we've, we've got a lot of things that other communities don't have and I think we, we'll continue to do this. And like new developers, they have to set aside some money for either a park, pocket park or something like that. The only problem with that, those pocket parks, is we have to maintain them, the developer does. So that gets to be a real problem. But one thing that I'm, I'm really proud of is when you come into Garden City on Kansas Avenue, it's clean, we've got it landscaped properly and I think it's a real asset. You look around, from, from Hutchinson to Pueblo, there's not much. We've got about the nicest city between there. That's all.
Thank you, Dan. Jacob?
I mean, everybody kind of hit on, you know, running the spot. I'm making the city walkable and then, you know, there's a lot of streets that don't have sidewalks, you know, and it's kind of being, looking at those and, you know, putting sidewalks there so people can, you know, have the ability to walk and not risk getting hit by a car on the line and walk on the streets. The bike paths, you know, finding ways to expand those or bike trails. You know, there is the Tally Trails and, you know, we use those, we use those quite often. And either, you know, expand on those as they're doing and, you know, we have the Y, the Rec and, you know, the, the fitness center, the new one and helping bring in those kind of businesses also, along with, you know, retail and industrial and stuff like that, also bringing in businesses that promote a healthy quality of life.
Thank you, Jacob. Melvin? Last election cycle for city commission, there was a great deal of discussion about rail service. What is the future of rail service for Garden City?
Well, I hope this tiger bond will, will develop and we can, we can get the work done on the rails that we need to have worked on from Newton to over into New Mexico, I think, is the area that somehow, all, all the places along the, the route have got to come and promote it and get people to ride the train. If they don't ride the train, I don't think there's much future in it. Also, you've got to convince the people in DC to, to, to fund it and assist us with it. That's just too big of a ticket for the city to do. We can certainly promote it and go to Washington and promote it. And I, I, I hope the, the Amtrak stays, I really do. I don't think that you'll ever see rail service stop, but I think Amtrak is, is one of those things, teeters from year to year, who's in DC and who's not in DC and whether they want to do some other, other thing with it. I personally feel that there's a lot of push by people in Washington and other parts of Kansas. They want to, I think they want to dump off the Amtrak at Newton and run it south to Wichita and on down to Dallas and forget us out here. But it's another means of transportation and we certainly could use it and I hope it stays.
Thank you, Melvin. Dan?
Well, I was in Washington DC when we interviewed the people that did the Tiger Grant proposal and, you know, we tried to do that with our city engineer and it failed the first time. So... So these guys are professionals and they knew how to do it. And as a result, we were successful in getting, I think it was 25 million, was it?
Twelve.
Twelve million, twelve million. And, but, you know, when talking to the people at the railroad, Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, they'll tell you that, you know, they don't really care about the rail, the, the passenger service. They're, they want the, the commercial, the rail, the hundred car trains and that type of thing. But I think, I think we'll probably be able to, to keep it for a few years and we'll sure, you know, we'll do everything as the city, as far as the city goes, to promote it and try to keep it. But it's, it's gonna become harder and harder as we go along and, because it's not a priority to those people. That's all.
Thank you, Dan. Jacob?
I never rode the train, so I really don't know, I only know a few people who have rode the train. So it's really, you know, as a city to aggressively push and to encourage people to ride the train, you know, if there's no money going into the train, then, nobody riding the train, then it's kinda sitting there. If it's just sitting there, there's really no need for it. So it's either, you know, pushing it forward to be, for people to ride it and, you know, seeing how it works out and, you know, the future's unpredictable. You might, you might see a big spike in people starting to ride the train and you might just see, they're just totally just dropping off. It's the, the commission though to see, to make sure that, you know, that they use these options, you know, they want the, the train services to stay here, that they use the options to aggressively push to keep it. And if it's not working out, then to make sure that it's done to where they just cut it off.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Roy?
Mark, it goes back to the trimodal system that we have here in, in western Kansas. Rail is very important to us here in Garden City. I was taking a superintendent candidate around today showing us what we have here in the community. We have a four-lane highway that runs pretty much from county line to county line. We have regional air service. We also have rail service that brings in wind turbine components into our, our depot here at TP Now. We export grain alcohol out by rail. We also export grain out by rail. So to improve the track for Amtrak is important for passenger rail, which the Pecos League, the Garden City Wind, all, all of the players will be riding that, which will help increase the passenger count for, for that. But it's really, like Secretary King said when he was here, it was, it's actually the, the rail, the transport of goods and services on the rail that's really important for us here. Passenger services is vital for us to have. If we lose air service, we have two other ways to get in and out of Garden City. But we do have quite a few people that travel Amtrak out of Garden City and it is very important that we have that means of getting people into Garden City as well as out of Garden City and traveling. So I think it's vitally important and I'd like to thank our, not only our state representatives, but our federal representatives in, in helping to get the approval of this, this grant for this section of the track to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan? Another question from the audience. How do you feel about the consolidation of city and county departments and services?
Well, we, we've discussed that with some of the county commissioners and at first, my thought was, you know, we needed to combine the police and the sheriff department together, but I've kinda changed my mind on that and I think that that's probably not gonna happen. But as far as IT, we've talked about maybe combining some departments and IT was one of, one of the areas that we could do that. Maybe some purchasing. We could go in and purchase bigger quantities of products and services and that was a, a possibility, but it's, it's going to take a lot of work, but one thing that, that we work well with the county and the county commissioners, which we have two here today, but we, three here today, yeah. But anyway, we, we work well with them and, and I think that with, with Matt and Randy, if, if they can, you know, they're the ones that, that work every day with, with, with the staff and if they can see areas that we can work together and combine or, and save money, I think I'd be for that. But the big, the big elephant in the room would be the police and the sheriff and, you know, you've got an elected official for the sheriff and you've got somebody that's appointed as police chief. So it does create some problems. I know that it's worked in Rodley County pretty well, but I don't know of too many places that it's worked well combining those two, law enforcement. That's all.
Thank you, Dan.
I don't have too much on this subject, but one thing is, is, is what's gonna be the most effective, what's gonna be most efficient. And if one thing is and one thing isn't, then go with one thing that is and go, and don't go with one thing that isn't. Plain and simple. But they're two separate entities and it's making sure that they can, you know, co-work together. And if two things go together, then put them together, they don't, they don't, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Roy?
We did discuss this with the county commission during our joint, joint meeting that we held together. It was brought to our attention as well as the county commissioners, that our IT departments could work together, city and county possibly on, on a kind of combining, because they do a lot of pretty much the same things and it's something that they're looking at doing. But if there's ways that, and we've combined a lot of, of things that we do. For instance, our, our law enforcement center houses both entities, the sheriff's department as well as the police department. We also have, our communication dispatch is run under one roof for pretty much all of communication, for all of our emergency services. So we do a lot of, of things together and I know they did, Matt and Randy did a study to look at ways of, of combining services and creating those efficiencies and they were gonna get the, that study to us so we could look at that again and kinda revisit that and see what we could do to possibly find efficiencies. It always seems to get brought up all the time of ways to, you know, how can we combine services? And then, you know, the city manager and the county administrator get together and start looking at ways to do that and find we're, we're doing a pretty good job. You know, there's some areas that we could probably do it, but it would sometimes create conflicts for whatever reason or there's different rules or regulations that conflict. So, but I think overall, you know, we're doing a pretty good job at, at the combined services that we have, that we're working together with. But, you know, the, the IT thing was, was another way we, the information technology services that the city and county have might be another way that we could combine and create an efficiency there. And that's something that we're looking at and hopefully we can bring something to the City Commission and the County Commission and we can work to put that together. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Melvin?
I'm not totally against it. I, I would certainly wanna look at it and see what benefits would be there for both the city or the county in, in savings. The IT was the thing that came up. That may be workable, but, but anytime that you combine the two IT groups, whether it be for the county and, or for the sheriff and then sheriff, or the, the county has its equipment, then the city has its equipment, who has priority and who's in charge? So I think you're gonna have to really take a deep look at it and see how it's effectively gonna work. Because you're always gonna have conflict if you have two bosses trying to run the same show. I don't know about the PD and the sheriff could ever be combined. They, they do different things. They have different statutes covering the sheriff versus what covers the, the police. So those things are out there, you, you just can't start and do away with the sheriff's office. I think it's gonna take a, a, a vote to do that. You just can't draw a line across it and say we don't have a sheriff anymore. So there are conflicts and, and it would be hard to work it out, but I am hoping, I'd like to see the two managers together, maybe with their department heads that come up with some ideas and present them to a, a combined commission, city and county and, and see what can come up and see how we can do it. If there's ways to save money, I'm for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. We are running out of time. I had one more question here, but, but we, we do need to wrap it up here. So what I'm gonna do now is ask each candidate to give a, as a, a closing remark. If you'd keep it to about one minute, please. And Jacob, I'm gonna start with you, please.
You know, I just wanna go ahead and I wanted to continue to do what the other commissioners have set out to do and that's continue just to build the city, to make, to make sure there's quality in the city, that our residents can afford housing, that they can afford the things that we bring in, that we bring in jobs that are higher paying wages. And that's a one, that's an issue between the city and state and government, and national government on wages. Being a sounding board for all the different diverse groups, listening and helping to figure out different ways on if we can do this and we can do that and helping each different group live better in the city and opening up opportunities for all ages and for the youth to have more opportunities in the city, whether that's their leadership or different aspects like that.
Thank you, Jacob. Roy?
Really just following on the goals that we've done in the past and the current goals that we're looking at doing for this following year. You know, we really focused on fiscal responsibility and providing, you know, providing a stabilized middle levy and we're using that through the increase in, in sales tax. You know, the last four years, our sales tax revenue has increased each year over the previous year. This year is gonna look like we're gonna be on the same track and trajectory. So, you know, really focusing on, on that. We have a budget coming up that we're going to be looking at. You know, we looked at improving existing and public facilities, you know, like expanding our parks, expanding our trails, expanding just the infrastructure overall for the community and, you know, looking at developing residential, commercial and industrial sectors for our community to make us a growing and regional center for not only southwest Kansas but western Kansas. And thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Roy.
Melvin? I'm gonna say ditto to a lot of what the mayor said, so I won't have to hit all that. You know, any, I wanna look at anything we can do to make the city more livable and more comfortable for everybody in the city. If there's problems out there, we certainly would like to hear them. In fact, the City Commission meets three, two, three times a year, right here. We'll be here tomorrow night and there won't be three or four people here. And that's an opportunity that anybody can come and talk to us and will listen. So when you, when you talk about diversity and not listening to them, we have opened those doors and we, we, everybody that works for the city is willing to listen, but we, as a commission, have, right here, we have a town hall meeting and we have no topics except what you bring to us and we'll be glad to listen to you. I'd like to have another term. I've enjoyed it here and I just, this is a, this is a self-rewarding job and I can't think of anything I have done that's made me as happy as to do this job. I wanna do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Dan?
Well, appreciate your time and effort into this and also all the, the sponsors tonight. One thing that I guess I bring to the commission is, is I've been in business in Garden City for almost 50 years. I know what it's like to make a payroll. We had over 100 employees. And, you know, if you like what's happened in the last four years, I'd appreciate your vote for, for another term. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'd like to thank all you gentlemen for being here this evening. I'd like to thank the, again, our sponsors, Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce, the Garden City Telegram and Downtown Vision. I'd like to thank the, also the city of Garden City for the use of the facilities and the televising of, of the event tonight. What we're gonna do now is we're gonna take a few minutes, allow you gentlemen to, to step away. We're gonna bring in the Holcomb City Council candidates and we'll start that in just a few minutes. Thank you all.
Thank you.